Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. It's 5:30, time to begin. It is Thursday, May 3rd, and this is our study session. We do have a full board here tonight, so tonight we have Dale Hansen, Business Manager, Terry Rhodes, Board Member, thank you, Jeff Nelson, Board Member, Alan Groening, Board Member, I'm Kathy Christensen, Board Member, Roger Pulsifer, Board Member, Steve Norton, Superintendent, Randall Bagley, Board Member, and Larry Jepson, Board Member. And we would like to begin by reciting the pledge, so if you'd please join us. Roger will help us. Lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for successes in a changing world.
Alright. We will begin with our student presentation, and we're so excited about this. This is Lewiston Elementary's Before School Morning Choir, and Principal Leslie Burt is here, and their director, I'll quickly find it, is Debbie McKnight. Yeah, thank you.
She's really excited.
Oh, we are too.
It's always fun. So I just need to give a quick introduction. Long before I got to Lewiston, they began some wonderful Before School Morning programs. And a couple days a week, they have a choir program, and then the other days, they have a healthy lifestyles program where they can go into the gym and do activities and get a lot of the wiggles out before they get learning, and it's been a really great thing at Lewiston. And the head of this choir, who also is our music specialist, is the Queen of Music, Debbie McKnight, and she has done amazing things at Lewiston for many, many years, and anytime she starts talking about retiring, I remind her that she can't. So I said, "You may be coming here in a wheelchair, but you are going to come and teach these kids music." And she says, "Well, I will come in my wheelchair because I can't imagine not doing this every day," and that the kids bring her life and joy, and you'll see it as she interacts with the kids and as the kids perform for you today. So we'll go bring them in and let them do their thing.
Okay, great. After they're done, can you have them just stay kind of grouped in here to get a picture? Thanks.
Thank you for letting us come. This is so nice of you. I just said, "Dear parents, I know I could start at 4:30 tonight to direct the facility unless the children want to retire." We would like to start out with a thought for you. How are you?
The fact that you have a sacred, sacred memory, I know, right?
You're a, yeah, I totally believe so now. But she's lying on the mat. Oh, you'll see this as English, then German, and then it's a break wash song. Happy, 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 happy comes the summer over the hill, over the hill comes the summer hop, happy over the hill. Marking, 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 marking comes the summer over the hill, over the hill comes the summer hop, marking over the hill. Happy, 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 happy comes the summer over the hill, over the hill comes the summer hop, happy over the hill. Marking, 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 marking comes the summer over the hill, over the hill comes the summer hop, marking over the hill. Music, music, I love music, it's my favorite subject in school, must have my favorite teacher. Well, I love music, it's so cool. I asked the kids what they wanted to see, and they answered yes. I love the crazy, I love the light, I love the beauty of the world, I love the magic of the universe, I love the music, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, I love the music, I love the music. Yeah, one more for you, and then we'll go. Oh, we usually have any kids, but there's a lot to talk about. Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers, a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked. Is Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers? Where's a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked? Peter Piper picked a peck of Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked. Is Peter Piper picked a peck of Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers? Where's a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked? Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers, a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked. Is Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers? Where's a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked? Peter Piper picked a peck of Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked. Is Peter Piper picked a peck of pickle peppers? Where's a peck of pickle peppers, Peter Piper picked? Woo! I did a proud tour. So if you want to see the whole.
Show, Wednesday, May 16th, at 7:00 PM, Lewiston Elementary. It's just the same distance to drive there as it's to drive out here, so make the drive, it's lovely.
Alright, let's see. Everybody try and get in between somebody else's shoes. There you go. Hey, look at me, ready? One, two.
Thank you, children, we appreciate that so much. That was absolutely delightful, and thank you, parents, for making the long journey here to perform. That just brought so much joy to our meeting tonight, and we really appreciate it, and thank you, Debbie, thank you, Leslie. It was awesome.
Where's the?
I guess I were listening.
Okay, I think we'll go ahead and move on to our recognitions, and tonight, we're just really excited to recognize Bethany Anderson. She is the Green Canyon Sterling Scholar winner, and Principal Dave Swinson is going to be doing the presentation tonight.
Well, I would like to think that maybe 10 or 11 years ago, Bethany might have been in that choir, or some of those young kids, maybe in 10 or 11 years, might be standing here with, as Bethany, because Bethany was our Sterling Scholar finalist in vocal performance. And she not only represented Green Canyon, but also our district as one of the finalists. And most of you, I don't know if you've been down to the Sterling Scholar, when they do the presentation down at the, I guess it's the Conference Center, and it's really neat, it's one of my best performances, it's one of the best things I get to do, and I didn't get to do that last year, because I'm not sure where I was last year, I was kind of in between schools, but it was fun to go down. We had three of our Sterling Scholars represent Green Canyon in the finals. We also had some other, some great people representing the rest of our valley, too, from other schools down there, it was really neat. Bethany Anderson is a senior here at Green Canyon High School, chose to come to Green Canyon High School, and we're so happy because she is involved in so many things. She's one of our student ambassadors, she's also in our show choir, she's also very, very involved in the drama, and been in the musicals, and things like that. She's just, gets herself involved, you'll always see her around with a beautiful smile on her face, out looking to help. But one of the things, when you go down to the finals at the Sterling Scholar, there's around 170 students representing the state of Utah down there in different categories. She was one of those, one of those 170 students. And one of the neat things is, then they recognize the finals, and the runner-up, the finalist, in each of those categories. At the very end, there are two, well, there's three, but two distinct awards that are given out at the very end, and that is the Philo T. Farnsworth Award, and then the Zion's Bank Community Service Award, and that's open to all the participants. The Community Service Award, it was kind of emotional when she won this award, because it was neat, too. In fact, I think they, everyone had a standing ovation in the back for you when they did that. I was right behind, I was sitting between the podium and where KSL was presenting, and I could see your face the whole time. And when they presented that, they started to talk about the things that she's done as far as community service. I could see her smile just getting bigger, and I turned to Mrs. Mickel, I said, "I think she's got it, I think she's got it." In fact, later, I found out that that was an award that she was hoping that she could get, and it's one of those things that, because it's based on the community service, and there are some remarkable people that are down there, so I just, it was so fun to, you know, have her represent Green Canyon, but also the district, in being selected as, and the Zion's Bank CEO was there to present that award and say great things about you. But one of the things, one of the, many of the service things that she has done is one that probably caught their eye was that she, I'm gonna, if you might, I can read this, is creating an interactive musical program for the elderly in the community. And she's proven to be one of the most enriching experiences of her life. She began this project after working with a local hospice organization, which allowed her to see more clearly the physical, social, mental, and emotional challenges that accompany individuals in the advanced ages. I believe there's a great power in music, power to increase feelings of connection and to improve quality of life. While researching this idea, I discovered that music can help decrease perceptions of physical pain, increase feelings and well-being, and enhance memory and cognition. And so that was one of the, probably the things that maybe caught their attention that she has created here in the valley. She has a 3.976 GPA, and I just am so proud to present to you our Zion's Bank Community Service Award winner for the Sterling Scholar, Bethany Anderson. Looks like she's the daughter of Roger and Tiersa Anderson, and you've got, let's have, go ahead, and Tiersa, stand up, and do you have somebody else with you?
Oh, this is my Aunt Miriam. She's going to medical school on islands.
Oh, good. And baby, little sister?
My little sister, she plays soccer for North Logan, so it's fun.
I guess I just wanted to thank everybody for my education in Cache County School District, the support that I've gotten through the arts programs, through the concurrent enrollment programs, through, there's always been a helping hand at Green Canyon, I'm so grateful for our administration there, and the administration at Skyview as well, and North Cache, where I've attended school, and I've just loved being here, and the opportunities would not have been there if it weren't for you guys, so thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. Bethany, we'd like to get a picture. If you and Principal Swinson will just stand there together, we'll get a picture of you. And thank you for representing our district so well and being such an outstanding student. We appreciate all that you've done in your school career. Okay, excuse me, we'll go ahead and move on to our public input. Do we do that? Do we have the public hearing first, or we have them come up first?
No, if there's anybody that just wanted to talk on any item that was not with the boundary chains, they could be first, and then the people who want to talk on the boundary chain.
Okay, alright. So let me just ask, Tiffany, is yours concerned with the boundary change?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and have you first, and then I'll just announce each one of you. You have three minutes to present what you would like to. We ask that you make no personnel comments, and that you be respectful, and the floor is yours.
Can I have 3.5 minutes? Seriously. Okay, my name is Tiffany Putnam, my children have been going to River Heights Elementary for the last eight years. In those eight years, I have been PTA president, chairman of our annual walk-a-thon, I've been in charge of almost every PTA activity held at our school, helped in countless classroom parties, and volunteered weekly to help our teachers. It's actually quite embarrassing for me to get up and tell you these things, but the reason I do is so you understand my intent for being here. As you can see, I'm totally committed and invested to this school. I love River Heights, my children love River Heights, and we have amazing teachers. I am here because of my concern for the projected class sizes for our sixth graders next year. With your current class size policy, we will be losing one FTE, and therefore getting rid of one of our sixth grade teachers, resulting in two classes with 34 students each, in portable classrooms with a workable space of 25 by 25 feet. Teachers will spend most of their classroom time in managing and disciplining instead of teaching. In a class size reduction report that was prepared by the Utah State Office of Education, they quote John Hattie in his book Visible Learning. He says, "Smaller class sizes enable teachers to provide more individualized instruction, spot specific needs, or identify problems with individual students, and promote a classroom environment more conducive to learning." They also use a quote from an article titled "Class Sizes Show Signs of Growing," published in Education Week. It says, "Follow-up studies through the years have found the students who had been in small classes in their early years have better academic and personal outcomes throughout their school years and beyond." Once again, this information comes directly from our State Office of Education's report. The current class size policy, as you posted on your website, states an average student-to-educator ratio in grades four through eight of 26 to 1. I was told this policy was later revised about 10 years ago to a 28 to 1 average ratio. I was frustrated for two reasons. First, that the website doesn't portray accurate information. Second, my frustration was to see the trend in which our district is headed. On the Utah State Board of Education's website, I gathered some numbers that were very concerning to me. In the assessed valuation per student in the fall of 2017, Cache County ranks 39th out of 41 districts. In 2017, Cache County District has an average student-to-teacher ratio to students higher than this average date ratio. Let's reverse this trend. It's been over 10 years since the policy has been revised, let's get this number headed in the right direction, not only for our students, but also for our teachers. Security, security is a huge hot topic right now. We're making a lot of changes to our schools this summer, but what about the portables? We are telling these kids, we care about the ones in the building, but we just hope nothing happens to the portables. They are unsafe, and they are sitting ducks. The proposed boundary changes, which would result in busing kids over an hour each day, is not the right answer to our large class sizes. Let's get a committee together and look at every possible thing we can do to get the resources and money we need to add on to our schools, instead of using portables. Let's create an inviting atmosphere for our students and decrease our class sizes. Until we can make this happen, I do have a proposal for an immediate fix. Let's use the approximately $100,000 that is being used to remodel the district offices, and provide two to three more FTEs to our schools with overflowing classrooms. A remodel can wait, but our students' education cannot. I just hope you listen to the concerns of the parents and represent us, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Maureen Fiafia. I'm sure I pronounced that incorrectly.
It's okay. It's a Bia.
Thank you.
And I'm aware of the irony, because I was coming after, so. What size is, and what I'm gonna say. I admit, I have no clue how long mine's gonna be, and I might have to talk really fast. My name is Maureen Fiafia, I have worked in Cache County School District, I have taught second grade at Providence Elementary School, I've taught ESL at River Heights and Mountainside. I'm currently our PTA president at River Heights, co-president, and again, share this with you for the same reasons that Tiffany has shared with you. I absolutely love Cache County schools, and I am proud to have my students go there. My last year of teaching at River Heights, before we moved out of state, I had to teach at River Heights and then drive to Mountainside every day to see my ESL students over there. So I do know what you're asking, when you're asking to send my children, where I live in Providence, out to Mendon every day, because I have done that drive every single day for a school year. I am 100% against this proposal. I have spent quite a few hours talking on the phone with Gary Thompson about my concerns, and I understand there's a ripple effect to all decisions, and I only have two minutes to let you know why I'm against having my, removing these children. First and foremost, I am tired of school districts thinking it's okay to remove children from their communities and busing them to areas that they know nothing about. To an adult, Providence to Mendon might not be a big deal, but to a five, six, seven, eight, nine-year-old child, that is almost like moving to a new place. I have not been to Mendon in the almost three years since we have moved back, not once, and I have been to Wellsville maybe five times for soccer. It is dividing our community. We have parents not willing to speak up against it in fear of their neighborhoods being the ones that have to be bussed. It's a problem, and I think that that is something that needs to be addressed. When a child moves to a new school, it takes almost a year for a child to get grounded and feel established. I'm also tired of adults making decisions for children and saying, "It's okay, children are resilient." But you know what? Not all children are. Some are, but not all children are, and out of my two children, I have one that is not, that this will not be what's best for him. You're asking kids to go to an elementary school with other students that then they will not continue to go to middle school with, and they will not continue to go to high school with. I don't see how that is what is in their best interest. I currently live in Cobblestone, I live in an established neighborhood, there is no more growth in Cobblestone, there are very few children in Cobblestone that will be going to River Heights next year, there will be four. I don't see how moving my four, the four children there, or my children, out of what's comfortable to them, is going to make a difference at River Heights or at Mendon. Currently, on Mendon's website, at Mountainside's website, there's 70 students in third grade. You're basically moving my son from one oversized classroom to another, oversized, overcrowded classroom from one to another, so I don't see how that's in his best interest either. If you cannot find a way to leave all three of those neighborhoods that you're talking about at Riverside, I would really hope that you would consider at least leaving Cobblestone and the Deer Creek Apartments, where there will also not be any more growth, and allow what few students there are within those two areas to stay at the schools that they currently go to, because I do believe that that is what's best for our students, and if I could get another three and a half minutes, I would then go on about our oversized schools as well, but I know I don't have time for that. Or overcrowded classrooms. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Maureen. And next, Tamara Sorensen.
Hi, my name's Tamara Sorensen, and we have three children, which will all be elementary aged next year. My educational background is in landscape architecture, environmental planning, and land planning also. We chose to live in Cobblestone because it is a walkable community, and we loved, we looked at property in Mendon, actually, but we passed it up because we wanted to be closer to town. My kids ride their bikes to school, and they can walk and ride their bikes, to their tumbling classes, soccer, to the gas station, and even to the grocery store. My kids love riding their bikes to school, and it's a 10-minute bike ride for them. We used to live in a community where 90% of the children had to be car-poled to school. It was such a refreshing, it was so refreshing to come to River Heights Elementary, where so many kids walk and ride their bikes to school. Our first week at the school, I was shocked at at least 100 bikes outside the school, probably more. Drop-offs and pickups go so smooth here, this was not the case at our last school. Generally, I'm opposed to the proposed boundary changes, because I do not want my kids sitting on a bus twice a day for possibly 40 minutes each way, because they would be among the first and the last kids to be dropped off and picked up. I'm unsure if the buses have seat belts in them or not, but generally, I'm uncomfortable with my kids being on buses for that length of time twice a day, every single day without seat belts on a regular basis. I also easily make five to six trips to elementary, to the elementary school per month for orthodontist, doctor appointments, kids that are sick, or other unpredictable reasons. With the proposed boundary changes, if my kids miss the bus, if they get sick at school or have an appointment that I have in the middle of the day, I have it myself at minimum a 40 to 45-minute drive ahead of me. I know many parents do not have that kind of flexibility to drop everything and drive out to Mendon to pick up kids for these type of circumstances. If push came to shove, I would prefer my older kids being in portables at River Heights. If push came to shove, I would prefer my older kids being in portables at River Heights Elementary to deal with the increased growth over having to be bused out to Mountainside Elementary every day. On a final note, Maureen, and I know firsthand that there are hardly any school-aged kids that live in Cobblestone. I literally couldn't even think of more than ten kids, not even probably that. If the reasons for these boundary changes are to deal with increased growth, I don't know why Cobblestone was included, because there are truly hardly any children that live there, because it is a retirement community. Thank you for considering our comments.
Thank you. And Taryn?
Hi, I'm Taryn McEwen. I live in Providence. I received my Bachelor of Science in Statistics from Utah State University, but you may know me, Teri, from... I am the head coach of Ridgeline High School Swim Team. So I'm here today to oppose this proposal as well. And I do have a fifth grader this year who will be a sixth grader next year, and it wouldn't affect him having an oversized classroom, because he has such a different personality. He's outgoing, and he is silly, so he may actually be hard for that teacher, but he wouldn't... it wouldn't affect his schooling. But my concern is, I have five children, and all five will go through this school, as I have a kindergartner with a learning disability. I'm sorry. And by the time she gets up there, that's my concern, is I think that... Sorry. That the outliers, the kids who can achieve really high, and the kids who need more help, they will struggle. That's the issue that I see with it. And that's impossible for a teacher. So I coach fifty children, and by the time they get to me, their personalities are kind of already locked how they are. But I can tell you, I know their names. I know so much about them, what they like, what they don't like. I try to do everything in my curriculum as a coach to make them better humans. And I know, just being at River Heights for this long, the teachers there, they do that too. They do a great job, but that's a lot to ask, to try to have the kids that can excel really far and the kids that really need the extra help, because now I have a lot... I have a few accelerators, and then I have this one child who will need extra help. She just will. And I would just hate for her to get lost in that. And I'm not putting all of that onto a teacher's job, because I'm her first teacher, and I take full responsibility in that. But it's still, it's hard when we want the community to support. And like Tiffany said, I have been in every single classroom, just... and done everything. And I was in charge of movie nights for way too long, and I finally don't have to do that anymore. But we love our school. I think that's the thing, is that schools and parents and coaches and everything like that, they bind a community. And I think that's what these women from the Cobblestone are trying to say, that we want to keep our community rallying around each other, because there is just so much support at this school. It's been a great, great school, and we appreciate it, and I would hate to see that happen to those children. And I would hate to see my daughter... and they've done so much the second they found out that she had a problem. The principal reached out to me. Everyone has been so amazing, and I could not even... I mean, she feels loved. My daughter feels loved, and thank you, Stephanie, for that. So please consider that when you're making your decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We will go ahead and move on to our public hearing for the boundary realignment for River Heights and Mountainside. Does anybody?
Same here.
Okay.
Is there anybody else?
All right, so we're not presenting anything then. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate that. All right. We'll move on then to our reports agenda. And first of all, we have the school land trust plans that Mike is gonna talk to us about, and then he will talk about amending the school community council board policy.
Board members, I'd like to start off with, on the school land trust plans, that this year, we have everything loaded into board docs. And so I have that displayed up here at this time, so you can take a look at every school there, and they're all in the digital format. And so the first question I need to ask the board is, do you want a hard copy of these, or is the digital through board docs? Okay. That's what I need to know from the board.
Digital's good for me.
For me as well.
Okay. So if anybody needs something printed, if you'll just let my office know, call, ask Anne, she'll get you anything that she needs that way. So we... so right now, we have every plan, and I think the way the board has done this in the past, I don't know if you're still planning on that, you kind of divvy them up so different schools...
Yeah, we have our assignments already.
On that, okay? The... I just want to give you a quick sixty-second training session on what you maybe should look for when you open up these plans. And I do need to say, I appreciate our school board taking the time to look at the plans, because you do have an option to just say, "District, you look at the plans, we'll rubber-stamp it, and we just move on." Okay? I know you have that option, and we're willing to do that, but I think you want to be engaged in the process, so I appreciate that when the board is willing to do that. There was one plan here that I'll just pull up, North Cache, to give you the quick... my quick little lesson here. And it's color-coded here, so hopefully that helps just a little bit. So every school will have one, two, three, maybe four goals. But underneath each goal, what you're going to see is action plans. So I'm going to grab his first... here's his first goal right here. And so you can do a quick, brief read on what the main goal is, but here's the key part of what you're looking for. The action plan and the expenditure for that plan. And the way I usually do this is I always go to the expenditure. And so he has an expenditure here under professional technical services, and he makes the statement right there of what they're going to do with those funds. And I'm gonna have to put my glasses on to read what it says there. You can probably see it on your screen. But register... registration for PLC Conference, ten teachers. So... and he has an amount of money sitting right there. I go up here in the action plan and say, "Do you see that?" The actual thing that he's going to do and spend money on. Yes? Okay, it's good to go on that one. He has another expenditure down here for transportation, admission, those types of things related to that conference. So he mentions that here. Is it up here? Yes, it's right there in his action plan. Now, that's all the expenditures, but yet there's still one area up here that's part of the action plan, but you can see there's no money attached to that, so that's okay. All you're doing is verifying the expenditure... this actual listed expenditure is listed in the action plan. That's what you're looking for. Now, I can go through his other plans. Here's his goal number two. He has a couple of expenditures here. You look at the action plan, do you see it? Now, what I will tell you is, I picked the very easiest one for you to look at. Teri did a very brief bullet statements on his plan. Other schools, you're gonna see, when they list their action plan steps, they're pretty detailed. And you... so to me, the easiest way to do it is go down, look at those expenditures, and I color-code it. And then I go up there, like I did on green for personnel costs. Then I went up there and highlighted in the action everywhere I could see that, so I could see that there was a tie to that money. But you can do it any way you would like, all right? That's the idea of what you're looking at when you're taking a look at the school land trust plans for each school.
So, Mike, they don't really have to have the expenditure listed up with the action plan?
No.
I think we watched for that last year, and some of them...
Yeah, you don't really have to have the exact money there, as long as it's listed here in wording. Now, if you want to give that guidance to the school and say you want to see the actual amount that there... you could make that suggestion in there, that we want the actual amount listed in the action plan as well. That's okay. Because we could... the way this process works is, after you take a look at things and you make your comments, we give them back to the principals, open up their... these plans, and then any comments that you're making, they go in and edit their plan before we actually lock it and then send it to the state.
Okay. And so we all got a copy of the rubric that we should use. Does everybody still have that copy that you can use? Do we just bring that rubric to you?
No. What I think you do is you bring the action plan with your notes on it. I mean, this right here, their actual school land trust plan, I'd write your notes right on that, and you're gonna hand them...
Okay. Could I get a printed copy then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can give you printed copies. I think that's easier for them than to see what your notes you made actually on the plan.
So, Mike, do you want them to come back to you? In the past, I've just sent them to the principals. Is that...
Yeah. And I was gonna make that suggestion when I was thinking about it today. I think it'd be nice if you went to the school on the plan that you looked, and you sat down with the principal and just had a discussion with them.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And then now they have it. It's been a one-on-one conversation, and they know what the things that you saw. Now, if you don't want to do that, then that's okay too. But I think that'd be a nice touch for the board to sit down with each principal.
It worked out a lot better.
Did you call, or did you go to this school?
I called him.
I emailed him.
And I called. So maybe for those who have tight schedules, calling or emailing them would work. Okay.
Mike, is this a PDF, or can we write right on this?
This is a PDF. Well, if you bring that up, no, it's not editable. I'll have to give you a hard copy.
It's printable, though. The PDF is printable. So you can just print the ones that you want.
Yeah, you can print it.
And then just copy.
Instead of the whole packet, you can just print...
Your schools.
Yeah. If you open your schools, then on the PDF page, you have the option to print it.
And I have a hard copy right now of all the schools. So if you divvy them out tonight, there's the hard copies, right there.
That'll be great.
Okay. So we just tried not to kill a bunch of trees and gave you all a great big book.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Okay?
Okay.
So there's the hard copies.
Perfect. Maybe just take yours out, and if you need to remember what schools you have, look under library on board docs.
Roger, and I've still got a flip for Lincoln.
Oh, okay. All right.
Which one of you... who's assigned South Cache?
I am.
Okay, so I'm... the plan in there in South Cache was edited about 4:45, so I'm gonna give you a new hard copy. So the one that you see is not their final. Okay?
Okay.
Others, I think, are their latest copies.
Great.
Right?
Any questions, anyone?
What... I'm sorry, the timing, Mike, on this.
Well, they... we need to have the board's approval of our school land trust plans at our next board meeting.
Okay.
So in two weeks?
Two weeks?
Okay.
For you to be able to say, "We approved the plans."
Okay.
And can they make changes, if they need to make changes after that? Or does it have to be...
They can, even after the board meeting, and because you've... you'll approve it based on your input, then we'll give the principals a couple of days to put their final touches on it, then we lock them, send them to the state.
Okay.
Then they make their comments, and we see what we missed.
Should we make spelling error corrections?
I'd make... I'd take a look at all of them. Everything, yeah. And I think it's really... it really makes an impact. I hope you know that, board members, when you... you know, you take a look at these plans, and you sit down, you talk to a principal, it makes an impact to them, because they know that you're paying attention to what's going on with these funds.
Okay.
All right?
Any other concerns or questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and move on to the changing of the policy.
Okay, this... the next one I'm going to give you, we're talking about the amending our current policy on school community councils. Now, this actual policy is in the... is in board docs. It's under the draft mode, but I'm telling you, there's so many different colors and everything in there. That's why I'm giving you a hard copy right now, so I can point to you very specifically the suggested changes that we're making. Okay? So this is what's currently in board docs in the draft form. What I'd like you to go to is page two, and I've put notes up in here that I just want to reference to what's being changed on the current policy. Now, the whole idea of what we're changing here is, there's been a lot of frustration, a lot of questions about, okay, we do the school land trust plan, and we also do a school improvement plan. Why do we have to do a school improvement plan? And I had a chance to talk with the state, Paula Plant, about this, because I know there are quite a few districts in the state that do not do a school improvement plan. However, if you look at all of the policies, all the laws tied on the state website, it still uses... it still makes you accountable for a school improvement plan. So I asked Paula, "How do you get... how do you get... how do these other schools get around this?" And she says, "This is at the discretion of the local school board on how you handle a school improvement plan." And what she told me, and I put pretty much the exact wording that she told me, if you go down to comment number four right here. So this is the one that talks about the school improvement plan, and I left the word there under paragraph nine, "School Improvement Plan." And the suggested reading that'll go in there, "As approved by the Cache County School Board, the school land trust plan is the school improvement plan." She says, "That's what they do," because it's given the same information. Now, based on that, everything else down by bullet number five is all now deleted. Okay? So I'm not referencing the school improvement plan anymore on that. Now, I'm gonna go back up real quick to number one. All I did up there on number one, because that referenced the school improvement plan, that's been lined out in red, and we just made the statement there that the council chair shall update the school's website, and it says where they updated it, but they don't update it to the school improvement plan. That's why I took it off of there, okay? Number two is the same... the comment number two is the same thing. It's not being cited in the school improvement plan. If you look at the school land trust plan, there is no place in that plan where you can list school community council members. But there are other places, the website, and also in the fall final report, that those are listed, and I'll make it... and this policy will reflect that. Now, if you go to number three, duties of the council, I lined out school improvement plan and added the fall final report. The fall final report, the board has typically not seen that. But if you take a look at that, it's very... it gives the same information that the school improvement plan provides. And this fall final report has to be submitted to the state by October 20th. And the whole purpose of the fall final report is, it takes... it's a report that the school community council, along with the principal, puts together, and it talks about the results of last year's effort. And you can see paragraph C there, it talks about what's involved in that plan. But the main thing is, it's talking about the expenditures of the plan, and it also talks about how the goals were achieved, the status. That's... I've got you on the wrong paragraph there. Go over to paragraph 10. That's the one I want you to look at. It's item number six, the fall final report. This is the one that's going to tell you exactly the same information that the school land trust plan has previously told you. land trust plan has previously told you. And it tells you all the details about what is there. We've put in here that the fall final report is submitted to the school board by October fifth. So, if you want to see the results of the last year's plan, how they spent their money, how did, what did they achieve on their goals, you'll see that by October fifth. And then we have to submit it to the state by October twentieth. School improvement plans were never submitted to the state. They always stayed local. Fall final report always goes to the state. Do you have any questions about that, the fall final report? It's, it's reduced one major report for all of our schools. They no longer do the school improvement plan. It's a duplication of the fall final report. It's really what it is. So, we, I added that into the policy, fall final, to where the board can actually see it. We'll see it now as a requirement. So, that's the suggestions on the updating this policy. Do you have any other questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
I can't find the draft copy on Board Docs.
For?
The, this policy.
Okay.
It only gives me the option of board policies.
Yeah. Go over right, just to the right, a little bit farther.
Yep, it's there. Policies and then draft, and then three thousand general board policies.
It's kind of touchy to get on that little carrot to grab it. It's under three thousand, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, the way, the way this works, when I talked to Tim about it, is once the board approves the different change, the changes, then we pass this on to agenda, and agenda cleans this all up, and then the policy goes active again, and all the red, the greens, all the other colors are gone, and we have a new updated policy that's active. I do need to tell you, the school principals are very excited about a change for this right now. Their time, they're very busy, but they always saw it. And Kathy, you've said this before, and so has Terry. It just feels like you're doing it all over again. So, this is something they're looking forward to.
Thank you for working on this because they can use that time in better ways than just repeating something they've already done, in my opinion.
It's always nice when we can lighten the load.
Simplify things for them. Okay. Any more concerns or questions? Did everybody get their school lands trust plans?
Yes, only, what's the deal with sending Wellsville over here?
Missed it.
Been a tough day.
You were just testing me, huh?
Right. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we are going to go ahead and have our board committee reports. And I, this is just a report from the NSBA convention from each one of us. And if there is something from your report that you would like us to discuss further, if you will let me know, I will put it on the retreat agenda, so we can talk a, a little bit more about it. And so, Larry, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay. While this is being passed out, I also went to a coding session there. It was with the Apple folks and their new coding language, and I loved it. I could have stayed in that session all day and been really hooked in it. I, after working through that and actually doing hands-on, I can see why kids are jumping into it. And, and it really makes you think. You're problem solving, you're analyzing, you've got to use memory. And I was very impressed with it. I, I hope we'll push forward on that. Yeah. Yeah, it, it was great. And I got the quote of the conference in that session. They, one, one of the district directors, that the question-answer thing said, "Well, I'll, I'll describe our district like this. We have some rock stars and we have some rocks." I thought that was pretty classic. But the session I enjoyed the most was this, how to deal with negative people. And I'm not going to take you through all these things because it's, it's very basic, but, and I think I've talked to some of you about what I, what I came out with that really impressed me was the superintendent doing the presentation said, made the statement, he said, "I can take positive people and make great teachers out of them, but I can't take a great teacher, so to speak, and turn them into a positive person." Because they can, you, they only change from being negative if they want to, if they choose to. And the thing that he commented that had happened when he took over the district, I think it was twelve years ago, it was a district that was very middling in Wisconsin as far as their reports and levels. And they instituted a test, actually, that rates people as far as are they a positive person or a negative person. And they, they have actually adopted a policy. If you test as a negative person, he said, "You may, you may have great skills and credentials, but you'll never work in my district if you come through that test as a negative person." And their, their scores and their patron satisfaction has just gone like that. And so, I, I just thought it was very powerful.
Okay. Thank you. Randall?
Yeah. I like, Larry went to some very good classes. I enjoyed most of them. One of them that I went to that really kind of hit home is they had one on getting your community to love your district and schools here. And it's real funny, what the very first comment they tell you is exactly what Larry said, is to be positive about your school district. In fact, they encouraged everyone there to come up with five things that you could just name off your head about the five great things that are happening in our district. And I'm sure we could do that pretty easily. But they said to do that, come up with five things that you could tell everybody. Second one they says is, "Don't hide during negative circumstances." And I think our district does this. If something comes up, we approach it head-on. Another thing they said that we should do is constantly collaborate with all stakeholders. And I think we do a good job of that. It says that if we have dissenters, listen to them. And, you know, we did that tonight. We had a few people that weren't unhappy with what our plans were, but we give them that opportunity to voice their concerns and what they feel. It says, "Give forums and community committees and invite everyone to come." That's very important. And one thing that this district says is that they try to develop a strong relation with the senior citizens in their community, their taxpayers, and they're paying money into our system. And they said that they found that that was very helpful to invite senior citizens to some of the school plays. And they actually will go and visit some of the senior citizen centers and, and bring students there to provide musical numbers. And I'm sure if we did something like this one today at a senior nursing home or a senior center, that would develop a great, make it more positive with the senior citizen community. So, that's one thing that they encourage is develop a good understanding and with the seniors.
Okay, thank you. Steve, should we come back to you? Do you want to present your thoughts?
You told me I was next.
Next month?
Yeah, next month.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's fine. Yeah. No. Well, let's put you on for next time.
Okay.
Okay. Roger?
Okay. One thing I thought really interesting, the class of two thousand twenty, when they started out, water was free. I told myself I would never buy water. We always have bottled water now. Steve Jobs started the second round of Apple, the first phone, but not smartphone, economic hardships, and also stating that these kids in two thousand twenty graduation, they're going to have fifteen to twenty different jobs, which I have a hard time to believe in that because you don't see these career people anymore that stay in a job forever. They're always wanting to change. So, it's interesting to hear that. And the other thing is, human contact is still needed. I went to one that was talking about the emotional issues of kids and encouraging everyone in the school system to talk to people. The custodians, the cooks, the secretaries, everyone. You know, we might not think that's important, but there's some of those little kids that really need a personal contact with everyone in the building. I can remember when I was teaching, our cook was personal with everyone. She knew all the kids. I know our custodians, they went out of their way to make kids feel at ease, you know? And I think that's one thing we need to work in our district is to make sure that all of the personnel, the bus drivers, everyone is reaching out to each one of those kids. Because they might be the one that touches their heart and makes them feel like they're worth something.
Thank you. Alan?
There are a couple of them that I wanted to share. One of them was the National Archery in-School Program.
National archery?
A national archery. And this was really interesting because there are kids out there that, that Tommy Floyd, who was the superintendent of the district that started this in Kentucky, he, he started it because there were kids he couldn't touch. And they fell in love with archery. And it's not too expensive to start and you get with, you come with kits, and it can be happening during PE classes. And they have a safety shield that you can put up there so that no arrows go into walls and different things like that. And, and this was really cool. And it's something that, that I was impressed with, that maybe we ought to take a look at. But the one that I wanted to report on was the Missouri School Board Association Center for Education Safety. And these guys have really taken a look at safety and have followed, kind of followed that book, if I would have, if I would have only known. Is that coming in, Steve, if I'd only known?
Only I'd known.
If only I'd known. And they take the look at it and say, "Safety is not just a one-time assessment. Safety is from the time the kids come into school, you help them through the school. And, and you meet their needs and you take care of the kids that are at risk." I, I think, I think we all who have been teachers could say, "There's one we've got to watch." And, and pick him up pretty quick, or her out pretty quick there. And, and thank heavens for Sharie because she does a wonderful job with those kids. But anyway, there's a, there's a one-day training that a team from the district can go into. And it, it was something that I think we ought to take a look at and send. I have the information here on that. So, I think we ought to send a team there and, and get that information because this made more sense than any safety program I've been to in the time here in the state of Utah and outside. And it comes from Missouri, so there'd be a little travel time, but it's a one-day training. So, you and I talk.
Okay.
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 And if anybody has an, an archery, you know, desire, I've got the information on that too.
Okay, Terry.
Oh, I thought Jeff was going, "Did you do yours last time?"
There's only one column I wasn't.
Oh, that's right. You're always with us, so I forgot that you weren't.
Sorry.
Alan would like you to talk about archery. I also had a hard time only choosing one, so I'm telling you to. One of my most favorite was a class called Creating Spaces That Amplify Learning and Serve Students. And I took five pages of notes in that class. It was amazing. And, and the presenter just talked about how, I went into it a little, Larry, because I always worry about that being a vendor class, you know, where they're going to sell us this system of great furniture or something. And it wasn't. The guy is a designer and he put up, he had like five hundred pictures. He didn't show them all to us. But he said, "So, here's something you can do with five hundred dollars from IKEA furniture. Here's something you could do with really expensive stuff." Or, or mostly, he talked about taking stuff out of kindergarten classrooms. Like, you don't need twenty-five of one thing, just four is sufficient usually. But, but my favorite quote from that, my favorite thing that I learned from that class was that he said, "On your school's marquee, you should never put upcoming events. The people who need to know that already do, and the community doesn't care. What you need to put on your school's marquee is what great things are happening in your school. Like, this person just got this, or our team did this, or something like that. And advertise it in one more way, the really great things that are happening in our district." So, I thought that was a really great idea. The other thing that, that really was, it wasn't even a class. It was a vendor booth that I went by that gave me an idea that I think that all the schools have mascots. And so, I think the district should have a mascot, and we should have a sniffing dog that can not only sniff for drugs, but sniff for gunpowder and explosives. And that we have our own district mascot and trainer, and they go through all of our schools on a regular basis. And along with your training to identify those potential risk students, if we had a, a dog that could, that was an identifying dog, then, and the kids knew that the, that the animal was coming through the school, that the district mascot was coming through the school, but they didn't know when, and it was happening on a weekly basis, that, that that would be a deterrent to some things coming into the schools. Anyway, so I have information about that too.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so, mine, that I really loved was a workshop called, "What Schools Need?" And it was by Dylan William. First of all, I really liked him because he had a British accent. And second, he had been a teacher, he had been an administrator, and he was now working in the district office of one of the districts in Florida. And he gave every one of us a book. It was called Creating the Schools Our Children Need. Why, what we're doing now won't help much, and what we can do instead. And I just, he was just so great. And about ninety-five percent, I've read this book, and about ninety-five percent of the things that he says in this book, we're already doing. But he had some really interesting ideas. And it wasn't just his philosophy. He based it on surveys and studies from all over the world. I don't know how he got so many surveys and studies. But anyway, the one that I wanted, the one idea from it that I wanted to tell you about is teacher evaluations. And I just thought this was so interesting because when I started teaching at North Cash, the teacher evaluation was, the parents would evaluate you, the students would evaluate you, the administrator would evaluate you, and then your first year, the district would evaluate you. And I think we're kind of doing the same thing still, aren't we?
Well, it's, it's not quite like that, but it's.
But similar.
There's a lot of evaluation.
Okay. So, he said that, that's really not a great way to determine if a teacher is highly effective because it's all subjective. Every one of those is subjective. And so, if you really want to find out if a teacher is effective, then you have got to evaluate them according to how the students achieve. And he said, "And you cannot do it from fall to spring. You have to do it from spring to spring because over the summer, you have these affluent kids who their parents are taking them to Europe, and they're reading tons of books, and they're going to the library, and they're keeping that learning going. And then you have the other kids who don't have those opportunities, and their parents are working three or four jobs to try and put food on the table. And so, when they come back, they're not really where they left off. Some have moved forward and some have moved down." So, I thought that was kind of interesting. And then he said, "Also, something that determines teacher effectiveness can be the students that they have in their class." And I always felt that way when I. And I always felt that way when I taught a class. I could go in in two weeks to the faculty room and say, hey, my students are going to do great at the end of the year, because I had these super kids. Or, don't worry about having low scores this year, because my kids are going to have them, because they were really struggling school kids, or they had problems with behavior. And so he said, even if you do it from fall to fall, you can't base it on one year, because the demographics of the class changes so much. And so, I don't know where he came up with this number, and I didn't figure it out in this book, but he said, you really have to evaluate a teacher for 11 years to find out if they are highly effective or not. And he has a whole chapter on, so what do you do with these bad teachers then, in the meantime? And, and there's a whole chapter on it, but basically said, you give them professional development, like we're doing in the district, and you can help those teachers improve. But it's usually within the first three years of their career that it's going to affect them, and then after that, it's not so much. So, anyway, the one other idea that I thought that was great that went along with this is he said, if you take a teacher and see if they're highly effective, part of their effectiveness is going to depend on the teacher from the year before, and what those students have learned the year before. So, I don't know if we want to buy this book and all of us look at it and discuss it, or if anybody's interested in here. The two things that he said were really the things that we need to change and make sure that we have, and I don't buy into just one person and their ideas, but I thought he had some good points, was that we need to have a knowledge-rich curriculum, and we need to be improving the teachers that we have. And he has tons of really great thoughts and ideas that may or may not work, but I thought it was worth looking at. Is anybody interested in the book?
Yeah, I don't. He gives us a copy.
To look at?
Yeah.
And then maybe we could discuss some more of it at the retreat, if anybody finds something that really stands out to them. So, anyway, that was the one, one thing that, the one workshop that I thought was really great. And he did not, he really goes along pretty much with everything we believe in, in that, let's see, it doesn't help to pay teachers more for their performance. Reducing class size is important in the lower grades, but not as important in the higher grades. Trying to copy other countries doesn't work, because we're so different. Expanding school choice, he thinks that's a waste. And so a lot of the things that we, we believe in, he has proven with studies that our, our district is really on good track. Okay? Any, do you want to comment on anything, Jeff?
No, they all sound good. It's a.
How about Dale? Do you want to do this time or next time?
Save him for, for me.
Okay, so we'll do. They attended for next time, it's not very long right now, so we should be okay. So we'll do Dale and Steve next time. Okay. And then, because I said so much, I will just move my president's minute to next time as well. And so Steve, superintendent.
I really don't have anything, except just as the month of May, you just hang on. And there's a lot going on, and it'll get busier as we get towards the end of the month. Just remember to schedule all those graduations. I've already had somebody in my neighborhood say, I've come in, three of them, so, and he looked at me like, okay, I'll change the talk as much as I can. There are people out there who recognize that if we're going to have a lot of graduations.
Do, do you want me to book a restaurant on the day that we're there for three graduations?
Probably ought to, hadn't we?
Uh-huh. Do you guys have a preference as where you want to go? Try and get in the Bullhead? Okay, all right. I'll, I'll go ahead and get that scheduled in on that day.
Steve, when is our district celebration at the end?
Well, it's the end, it's Friday.
It's the first of June.
June 1st?
June 1st.
And time?
Uh, 5:30, is when they eat. 5:90.
Swim 'til 9.
Okay, that's all that we have on the agenda, so just thanks to everybody, and I appreciate all that you do to support our school district and to promote it, and to be on your committees and fulfill your assignments. Thanks to our district staff, you're awesome superintendent, businessman, business administrator, you're great. We're just lucky to have such a good district going. And so we'll go ahead, and this meeting is adjourned.